Yeah. Yeah, we're good, they're good. Okay, um, I call this meeting to order at five oh two. Do I have a motion to establish the agenda as published?
So.
And the second?
Second.
All those in favor, uh, my students?
I.
And directors?
I.
Yeah.
Um, excellent. So moving on, um, on behalf of the board, it's my pleasure to welcome back Senator Wellman and Representative Sen. Um, I would start, I want to start by just giving a brief introductions and then by doing, going around the circle and people can just, you can say a little bit more. Um, about anything that I may omit and also what you're looking forward to in this legislative session. Um, so Senator Wellman, uh, like Representative Sen, Representative Forty First District, uh, for those at home, it covers all of Mercer Island and Newcastle. With portions of Bellevue, Branson, Issaquah, and Smarish. Um, Lisa's a passionate advocate for education, uh, who begun her school team, uh, career as a public school teacher. Um, was in Apple in the nineties, um, leading her promotion as VP of Worldwide Publishing Entertainment and New Media Markets. Collected in twenty seventeen, Senator Wellman serves as the Chair of the Early Learning and K twelve Education Committee. And was chosen by our colleagues to serve on the Energy, Environment, and Technology Committee, as well as the Ways and Means Committee. She served on the Educational Opportunity Gap Oversight and Accountability Committee, the Mastery-Based Learning Work Group, the Work Integrated Learning Advisory Committee. And is a mentor for MBA candidates at the Foster Business School at the University of Washington. Uh, a few of the, uh, bills that she has passed and, uh, or that has passed that she has endorsed. Is, um, Senate Bill fifty-five fifteen, protecting children from child abuse and neglect. Um, Senate Bill fifty-two fifty-six, making permanent and expanding the Child Welfare Housing Assistance Program. And Senate Bill fifty seventy-two, advancing equity and programs for highly capable students. Um, Representative Sen, uh, assumed office in twenty thirteen, so congratulations on more than ten years now. Um, is a working mom with two kids and brings an important, uh, perspective to legislative issues. She consistently advocates for issues affecting baby families and seeks upstream solutions to address mental health. Economic and environmental justice and education equity. Um, as a state representative for the forty-first, Tana chairs the Human Services Youth and Early Learning Committee. She's also a member of the Appropriations Committee. And Innovation Meeting Economic Development and Veterans Committee. She also serves as a member of the Joint Legislative and Executive Committee on Behavioral Health. And is the co-founder of the Moms' Pockets, a group of legislators, moms and dads. Who care deeply about ensuring our state's families are supported and given every opportunity to thrive. Uh, Tana also serves as co-president of the National Association of Jewish Legislators. As well as others on the board, the Boys and Girls Club of Bellevue, and the Advisory Board of U D A, Masters Applied Child and Adolescent Psychology Board. Um, a few of the highlights of the numerous bills, um, that, uh, Tana has sponsored, which have passed. This House Bill fifteen fifty, assisting eligible children in need of additional preparation to be successful in kindergarten. By establishing the Transition to Kindergarten Program, House Bill seventeen fifty-six. Supporting clean energy through tax changes that increase revenue to local government, school, and impacted communities. House Bill twelve oh seven, preventing and responding to harassment, intimidation, bullying, and discrimination in schools. And House Bill sixteen forty-four, permitting funds in the Transportation Vehicle Fund to be used for electric and other clean. Uh, cable transportation, uh, including feasibility pant, planning, and fueling station infrastructure. Um, which our district is taking advantage of and now has, uh, two electric buses. Um, like Senator Wellman, Tana lives on Mercer Island, uh, with a husband, child, and I learned from her bio, a black lab.
Black lab.
So I decided to include that. We also have, uh, Max Akamoto, um, who is the representative, uh, from Adam Smith's office, which represents the ninth district. And now I thought I'd turn it over, um, to the two of you quickly and you as well, Max. Uh, following to just quickly, um, you know, give me say a few words about what you're looking forward to in this upcoming legislative session. And what your offices are working on, and then I thought we could do a quick roundtable of her introductions around the table and then move on. Uh, to turn it over to Fred, to give a brief overview for a few minutes and then to dive into the agenda.
Sure. Now, why don't I start? Because you'll have a lot more to say. So I'll cover, I'll cover a few more thing, I mean. Uh, I'll cover a few more, a few things, and I'm sure you'll cover a lot more. Um, first of all, thank you for, uh, having us here today. It's nice to see you, especially the new, uh, school members, too. Congratulations and great to see you up there. Um, yeah, we are about to start a legislative session on Monday, can't believe it. It's this short session, we have a two-year budget cycle, and this is the second year of, um, of the biennium. And so the idea is that we do, the idea is that we do less work and we pass fewer bills, but that does not seem to be the reality. So it's just same work in less time. Uh, my, clearly my priority for this legislative session. Uh, we'll have bill, we'll have bill thirteen sixty-eight that requires schools, um, to purchase only zero emission school buses from here on out, starting in twenty twenty-seven. Um, and that is just for those new buses, so on their depreciation schedule, so it will be a gradual, um, change. And of course, with the state helping cover the difference between a diesel bus and an electric bus and helping with the infrastructure costs. So I'm extremely excited about that piece of legislation, uh, for the health of kids, for the environment. Um, for the staff, frankly, for the bus drivers, um, got a lot less, uh, shake and, and noise. Um, and again, we just know that the, in particular, underserved, um, communities are those who have environmental justice issues. Um, this will be a, a big boon for them to have much more or no pollution coming out of the back of those school buses that idle and, and run through our communities. So, um, that will be my biggest push this legislative session, um, with funding through the Climate Commitment Act. To help cover, um, those costs for, um, for the school districts. So again, the idea is that it's a cost neutral to the school districts, um, completely with this, with the grant dollars, um. Coming from the state to cover those costs. So the other pieces, as you all know, that help schools pay for buses is the depreciation schedule. And so you get, the school districts get a little bit of money each year towards that twelve-year life of a bus. So that once the depreciation of that bus is, you know, the end of his life has arrived, they should have gotten enough money to be able to replace that bus. So with the passage of this law, the depreciation schedule will start to recognize the cost of an electric bus. And until you catch up, the state will be making up the difference. So again, the idea is that school districts will be made whole and helping with the, the infrastructure costs.
Can you, quick, um, the, the, one of the concerns I've heard is, is just not our district, but, um, that are more. That are bigger geographically, um, and whether or not that's even feasible, or that, do you have, do you address that in the bill?
Because it's a, it's a rolling change, right? So it's only for buses when they hit the end of their life. We imagine that by the time, um, every bus is replaced, the battery life will have been, will be better, right? We know, we see that already on our, all of our cars, it's getting longer and longer life. Um, and so, you know, if you have a long route, don't. Use your electric bus for that, I would say, until it gets to that. Um, but there is in the bill that out, that if there's a reason why it's unfeasible, then there's that out.
Great.
Um, we also did just get a report, um, today from the bus companies in Canada and like especially in around Quebec, talking about. Um, no, schools do not need to put their bus, electric buses inside. Um, it's the charging infrastructure warms up the batteries enough to charge them and they don't need, you don't need a physical structure. So that was great. They're like, we have four hundred buses in Quebec, but, and they do not, they, they are not inside. Um, and so that is fine. So that was actually an important question. That was also, um, recently, recently answered. Um, the other thing I will mention in education that I'm working on is the continuation of some special education. Uh, investments, uh, allowing school districts to do I E P development and evaluate evaluations and development over the summer. Uh, particularly important for those school districts that, you know, have a crush of, uh, of requests and needs at the beginning of the school year. And such that kids might take them a couple of months to get their, um, everything going and they just lost a few months of their education. And, uh, in particular, also kids who are like three, four, and five, uh, who might not be in the K twelve system yet. But rely on the school districts to do their evaluations in order to get services. We don't want those kids to have a long wait time. And sometimes that can be five, six months. Um, and that's like, you know, six of their lives. So that, um, will be a paid opportunity for schools to do them over the summer, optional. But I think an important tool to get kids ready for day one. Um, and I think that I will, oh, actually, one other thing, and then I'll leave it there. Um, obviously, children's mental health is a huge issue and we need to continue to work, uh, on that. There will be a whole host of, um, proposals coming forward through the Children's Mental Health Work Group that will come to my committee and or the Appropriations Committee. And look forward to, you know, supporting all of them from, uh, from, through childcare, through, um, K, K twelve education. And, um, one of the things that I'm working on is the interesting nuance around autism and the impacts. Um, of kids having to wait and families waiting for many times up to five years for an autism diagnosis. Um, and or they go private and pay for it out of pocket. It's often like three thousand dollars you go out of pocket, um, but if you're relying on insurance, it can take three, four, five years, uh, wait time. So trying to, to get at that, um, to really also clarify for families that there are three autism. Hat, not tests, but, um, kind of tracks. One is what you might need for your I E P. Another is what you might need to get help, um, uh, services, and the other is what you might need to get developmental disability services. And all three of those are different, and that's a mess for families. Um, and so trying to figure out how we can streamline this so families aren't, um, going down that road of multiple tests and, or lack of information and expecting to be able to access things. Um, that they can't. So a little bit of work in that autism space, um, yeah, so I will.
Very good, no?
We hadn't talked, um, although I, I do talk to my counterpart in education, uh, in the House, um, uh, Representative Santos. Um, so a little bit about, um, well, there's so much. I'll talk about kind of my personal passion bill, um, and, and what I'm really. I've worked really hard on. For the last several years, I, I don't know if we, we spoke about the fact that last year. I went to, you know, to study the education system in Finland. This year, the U A, um, the EU invited me and my team. Uh, back to, uh, Malta for an education, um, uh, conference that was primarily, um, A, AI oriented. And, um, by the way, I will share with you that, um, I'm planning an, an ed tech conference in Bellevue, um, in September. No, excuse me, August, the first week of August, so that, hopefully that will be good. And, um, the W D A is going to be sponsoring fifty teachers to attend, so I, it'll be easy for any of our teachers here. But teachers around the state, I really do want them to be able to understand all that is happening in technology. Impacting the classroom, impacting children's studies and how the, the tools that they use to study the games for education. As well as all the things that are currently available with Chat G P T and A I and other, other aspects of A I. To enable, um, the classroom teacher to manage the class, to create tests, to create, um, all kinds of facilities. That make it really a whole lot easier to do some of the grunt work that is not about the children, to give teachers more time with, with the actual kiddos. And so that's really exciting, and I hope maybe some of our teachers will be going. I'll tell you all about that as it comes. Uh, but because, uh, partly because of my background, both as a teacher, but then as forty years in tech. Um, and now seeing what's happened with our economy more, more so than ever before. Um, one of the bills that is very near to my heart is the bill that will, will require, uh, computer science for, uh, graduation. And of course, because it's four-year, it, it's an outlook, um, it's, it's not immediate and it's over a period of time. But it, it, it requires, um, O S P I to look at what is the one, that which, those standards. Which we think that every kid leaving this school system should have, you know, in their pocket, uh, knowing about technology, comfortable with technology. Because that's a digital envi, you know, that's an economic, different economic environment than we went into when we came out of, out of school. And it really, it definitely required that. Um, the EU is making, um, that the North Star, that every child in the EU, they graduate from whatever they call high school. Um, will have computer science and coding. We're not looking necessarily at coding, you know, at this point, but we do think computer science basics are really fundamental. Um, but if I'm going to go on, uh, talking about a couple of, you know, kind of big things, um. Uh, Representative Sen heard me this morning talk about the fact that, um, as part of this transformation of our school system, there's, there are many things. That we're involved with, um, and sitting on the Mastery-Based Work Group, the Work Integrated Learning Group, et cetera. Looking at changing our school system, um, more and more in the United States in the last, from, I think, six years. College, um, has fallen about ten to fifteen percent in terms of, of college registrations from about seventy-some odd kids or seventy-eight percent. Or, you know, down to sixty-five percent or something like that. And what we're seeing is that many more young people are interested in pre-apprenticeship programs, they're interested in skill centers. And a lot of what we did last session was making it easier to, um, integrate the skill set centers, um, into the programs. Um, in many cases around the state, and of course, I travel about four hundred miles every year to visit various parts of the state. We were out in La Push, um, all the way out in the coast this year with, with Aquila School. And then we were at, uh, other schools on, uh, in Yakima and in Moses Lake, et cetera. Um, really understanding, you know, what's going on. So there's those kinds of things, looking at, um. There's various schools that, that are all inclusion schools, um, looking at English language learners and schools that are completely, um, based on. Um, other languages and, and in some cases, two or three languages within the same school, which is really quite interesting. Um, I am, so those are like little touchpoints of, of, um, things that I'm working on this session, but fundamentally. Um, I think it's going to be a lot about money, uh, which is surprising, given it's a supplemental budget, so there's not a lot of money. But I've been, we've been working for three years now. I really would like to get the student transportation, uh, budget, uh, bill done. And, um, Mercer Island has always lost a couple hundred thousand dollars at least, um, looking at what it costs you and what we send to you. So hopefully, we will be fully funding our transportation. And the bill is a fairly inclusive bill. It speaks to the fact that we recognize that there are certain populations of foster kids. Homeless kids and kids who are too fragile to ride on the bus and that special arrangements need to be made, uh, for them. And that's a, a whole other cost, as well as the cost of making sure that we're paying, we're sending kids to skill centers if that's what they choose to do. Um, so that is a big bill that we're, you know, we're looking at. Um, I think we're going to try to run a fifty percent bond bill, doesn't affect Mercer Island, uh, particularly. But, um, for many schools, there are many schools that have never been able to pass a bond. Twenty-five years, no bonds. And so that's one of, one of the things we're looking at. Um, again, looking at taxes, there'll be a, a bill that, not looking at taxes, and looking at funding of schools, there's a lot of that that we're focused on. We talked about why are we paying sales tax for school construction? And so we want to relieve the, the school construction of the sales tax, so that will be, um, to you, um, changing. The cap, I don't think it affects you, that the sped cap at fifteen percent, now we changed it from thirteen-five to fifty percent. And now we're just going to move it, we're going to have a bill to move it to seventeen and a quarter.
What are we running out?
Eleven percent.
Yeah, I don't think that's ever affected, affected this school, um, district. Um, there are two bills that I think are really quite important for, um, for special education. We have heard from special education teachers that in the, in, in those special ed classrooms. Um, they really need more definition on isolation and restraint, what they can do, what they can do. Um, and, and, um, there is a House bill and a Senate bill. I think that they complement one another, what I've seen so far. And I'm hoping that we can move, um, both of them, because I think that that would clarify a lot of, a lot of things. Although from some of the things that we've heard, some parts of the trouble really stems from the fact that we just don't have the right placements. Some of these two hundred pounds, six feet tall, seventeen-year-olds, um, who break arms and legs of people in, you know, in those classrooms. I don't necessarily think that that's the right placement for them, but we're also trying, it, it's also very difficult to find beds for everyone. So that we have a number of, not a huge number, but you know, we certainly do have recognized a number of students around the state that we haven't been able to find beds for. Um, most of those who are in special, um, circumstances like that are out of state. The, the greater percentage of those are out of state.
Can I just put a pin?
Yes, please.
On this one?
Yeah.
For transitional kindergarten, to make sure that, um, isolation restraint rules are clear, that you can't do that for kids. Um, in TK, so right now it's, it applies to all the kinder, you know, K twelve, but they're preschoolers. Um, age, and so just.
Maybe in a minute.
Just gonna get.
We'll take a look at that. Um, we have two bills about fentanyl. Um, one for, um, making sure that young people know about fentanyl and the dangers of them. And then one that will require every school, um, it's about a hundred dollars a school to have Narcan on hand. And then, um, and people train. I've done the training myself. It's a ten-minute video on YouTube. It's, it's really nothing, but, um, so that people should know about it. Um, I've also spoken to it because some of this is just candid, but some of the stories about children absorbing it, babies crawling around, absorbing it and overdosing. It's just, it's horrible.
Uh, the call when Senator Wellman, we're very environmental, she picked me up, uh, on the way here. And I was on a call talking about a fentanyl on child welfare bill, so.
Yeah.
Senator, uh, Wilson and I working.
Oh, okay, great. Um, and, uh, I'm trying to see what else I have here. Um, interesting bill on bleeding kits. Um, one of the things, it's, it's sad to think that we have to think of having things like that in schools. But given, um, some of the things that have happened with guns in schools, um, where there would be a need for a tourniquet and, and for. Being able to provide a, believe, you know, to prevent bleeding out. Um, that's one of the things that has come up. I just thought that that was interesting and I, uh, was why I brought it along. These are not in all my bills, but some of them, most of them are, but not all. Um, and. I did want to talk just briefly about the, um, the initiatives that are, are out there, the, the one on education. We had a discussion this morning on that with, uh, King County people, East King County people. There is an extensive list of things in, in the initiative for Parents' Bill of Rights that you may have seen.
If you want to go context, so the, there's an effort to collect signatures across Washington State, and I think there's six that are likely to make it to the ballot. Uh, ranging across a whole bunch of stuff. And, and in general, they, um, they're up and down votes, so they can be very complicated content. Uh, and, you know, they can wipe out whole programs or start whole programs, but based on what's, what's written in that initiative, not through the legislative process. Where we tend to be a little bit more deliberative. Uh, but regardless, it's, uh, the ones on the ballot that might be on the ballot. Um, are around taxes, around parental responsibilities, are on, uh, a variety of, of issues, so.
Yeah. And then, and then there is one limitation about parents' rights. Um, and this really came up about two years ago as a, a bill that came before my committee, and we looked into it and it's like. Looking at what, what, what was in the bill, it seemed like we know about these various things. And so my team and I went off, we came back overnight and said, well, here are four pages of rights that parents have. What are we talking about? Well, it turns out, we had a scramble. We knew where these R C Ws were. We knew where, where to find these various kinds of things, but the average person would not. And as a result of that, we created a Parents' Bill of Rights, which is, this is everything that we've ever written that gives you opportunities of what parents can do. The rights parents have to find out the curriculum, to go into a classroom and sit without interfering in the classroom. To choose to opt out their kids from sex education, all of those kinds of things. What happens if, um, it was brought up this morning. Uh, you could, uh, you, your child could get medical care and you would then just get a bill for it. Well, we don't. The only way that would happen is that, uh, the child was, uh, you know, this was a critical situation and we had to send the, an ambulance to the hospital. And, and of course, something like that, but it's all laid out. And so this, uh, we, we put out last year, there's a Q R code, so it's on my website. We want everyone to be able to get their personal copy and to really look at it, and, and there's a very comprehensive table of contents. So hopefully, you know, this is either, we are judging, you know, making rules about what the parents can see. So when we did the, the sex education bill, we made it sure that there are, I think that there are something almost like twelve different curriculum. That you, that you can choose from, the state, the local board can choose. And then, um, you, you can opt your child out if you so wish, and it's very explicit. If we haven't made a rule about it, there are also some things that the federal government has actually set in motion that is there. And then there are other things that are completely left to you. I was asked the other day about, um, one or two districts had decided that. Um, they were not going to permit, um, you're going to be worried about this one, there are no cell phones in school. And so, um, they, I, I was then asked, we're going to make a bill about this. And it was, well, you can make a decision for your district. I don't think we need to get involved in everything, and it can be very much a local decision. And actually, I'm sure that a teacher can decide, this is the way it is. We're not going to permit use of phones or whatever. The other thing I just wanted to mention briefly, because I think it's really important, because it came to me from some of your youngsters as well. Um, was this project that is going on about Make Us Visible. And so, um, they came and what we're going to do is we're requiring, um, because it turns out that. As you look at the history, what is taught in history in our schools, doesn't necessarily speak to, um, our Chinese population and its formation. You know, it, what it did, the state, I know we talk about internments for the, for our Japanese, you know, families at a certain point in history. But the history of the state of Washington really includes a lot of different nationalities. And so this is, Make Us Visible is something that we're having, um, we've followed up on and we're having, um, uh, O S P I. Create this, review the, the, the history standards and make sure that that includes, um, uh, healthy background of what is actually there. So, um, we are also doing an interesting, I mean, there is one other thing, which I'm sure they're interested in. There's a, a, a change to the regionalizations, um. We're kind, kind, this is phase one of adjusting regionalization. We did regionalization when we addressed the McCleary B I X. And it, it hasn't worked for everybody, and, and for some of our, uh, east side schools, it isn't working as well. And so there's an adjustment that we're trying to move forward with, that will allow you to collect more of what the voters already said you could collect, but you're limited. Um, to, so that is depending upon what bond you run. Don't ask me all the ins and outs of the tech, of, of, of the specifics here. But what it does is if you were allowed by your voters to collect more money based on the bonds that you run. Uh, with the levies that you run, this allows you to collect more of them, which should help in some of their east side schools. Which are looking at regionalization compared to Seattle and some other very expensive places.
Do you mean, um, like the levies more and then?
Yes, so, um.
Sorry, so does, is there still the cap? I mean, is the proposal still having the cap or that cap is going to be lifted to whatever voters?
It's kind of a lift to, to allow you to collect more of, I'll just say, it allows you to collect more of what you were.
Yeah, I, I under the word.
God, it's gonna help you very.
Yes.
Yeah, yes. I, I don't want to mess it up completely, but you'll see, you'll see that.
So just to build on, uh, Senator Wellman was talking about, there's also a bill around Holocaust education to increase that, um.
Power educator, um, changing the, uh, I think this is an interesting bill, changing. Changing the part of the typical model, oh, was this a different one?
Holocaust education.
Excuse me.
Yes. Holocaust education, building off the Asian, um, Make It Visible idea, um, not, that's not why it is, it's just.
Do you have a third name?
Uh, it's actually Bron.
Okay, because, yeah.
Bron and Solomon and Kutar and Sam. Um, and then also asking um updating some of the programatics for programs across the state around automotive programs. To again, to uh bring us into the twenty first century to have them not just work on fossil fuel cars, but also on EV cars and buses. Um, so that theme there too.
Thank you for uh, comprehensive overview, I wanted to try to uh keep uh on track, sorry, completed more or less an hour. I may help turn over to Fred to give a brief overview of the financial contact review minutes.
Max, is that question there or? I can be very brief, sure. Um, no, and it was so great to hear um about what folks on the state are doing and I think there's a lot of correlations between what my boss is working on and what they are. Um, so I will be brief and I will say um, some of his large priorities have stayed mainly the same, um, being behavioral health. Um, he's co-sponsored quite a few bills that have increased funding for um like school counselors and making sure that the behavioral. Behavioral health workforce is properly funded, um, making it their status for people to join the workforce. Um, and I know there's a lot of thought on like special education, um, and fully funding special education, which is. Mostly a federal issue as well, so I know that's something that he's spoken with um different superintendents in the district before, I know that's something that he wants to continue to. Push for, um, I know there's a bill that he co-sponsored recently that would help provide more funding for special education and parent educators. Um, the only two other things I would say is there was also the talk about the electric school buses, um, and I know there's still money coming out from bipartisan. And infrastructure law, um, and I believe the EPA Electric School Bus Program um has another application round that's due at the end of this month, so. That's another thing, if uh different school districts are looking for additional funding for more school buses, that's something you might want to apply to. Um, final thing is just career and technical education, um, that's another thing that I think has been really popular with folks of the state level too. Um, but he's introduced a couple of bills that would create funding for community and technical colleges to provide free tuition for students who are low income. Uh, making sure that they have the opportunity to receive um career technical education to get into. Um, you know, the the trades and making sure that there's um thorough labor force is fully staffed up. Um, and he just introduced a bill um late last year, uh, that basically funds pre-apprenticeship programs as well, uh, so we're creating funding for stipends for students. Um, in order to go to pre-apprenticeship programs, so it'll make up for lost wages, childcare and things that typically create barriers for folks who are. Um, trying to get into these pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs. Um, but overall, yeah, behavioral health, uh, making sure that education is equitable, um, and promoting our trades, um, and make sure folks know that. While four year college is great, there are also other opportunities for students like two year colleges or getting into apprenticeships, making sure that everybody knows what their options are.
Max, can I just ask, uh, when you when you're talking about uh the bill or or spent um. The amount of money for spend, are 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 we saying that there's a bill that will actually have the federal government pay what they said they were going to pay?
Yes, there is a bill for that, uh, and it has not passed, but it is something that has some some democratic support and I know that folks are talking about it on the federal level, um. But in terms of the viability of it passing, I'm not sure what that looks like, especially as things are pretty hectic right now in Congress, um, but that is something that folks are pushing for.
Well, thanks for the, for you all being here, I I think the tenure of our conversations are probably different than my colleagues and other school boards around the state. We're fortunate to have probably two of the. Five or six strongest advocates of public education, so um, it's always a pretty friendly conversation, I think we'll probably start around the. Regionalization and and the EPNO levy or whatnot, um, just to kind of give you context for our district where we are now. Um, on the financial side, uh, you know, coming out of COVID, um, without a lot of HESR funding and that bill that ended up unfortunately. Um, falling apart at the eleventh hour, you know, we had essentially spent our reserves down for a variety of reasons, our fund balance was at zero. And we had even borrowed from ourselves and so, um, the last year, um, with Director Sullivan. Um, who's no longer our new CFO, but for you it might be uh newer, um, and our teams, our schools, you know, we were able to. Um, you know, take basically a negative fund balance and and grow that to um, two point six million. Um, in just one year's time, now, how did we do that? Um, you know, that took really matching enrollment and our staffing closely, um, making sure that um, we're thinking about how are we funding things? Cap tech levy, being really strategic around, um, uh, which bucket of money we're using um to pay. But I think the concern is we're still, you know, under. You know, operating cost monthly is five million for us, four million on the human side, about a million in operating costs, so we don't even have the. Operating, we don't have the fund balance to cover a month's of operations and. Uh, the board has an expectation of me to to get to uh eight to ten percent and we're on our way, but I I think the conversation that. You're all having, which is funding is coming into it more into a short session, session than maybe we've seen before. Um, I think it's because we're continuing to find ourselves in that same place that. How do we, you know, make that, those incremental comebacks both on the fund balance side while not decimating program? Because these students are here in our schools right now and so I think one of the um areas that we wanted to, you know, start off with. Um, with the board is around regionalization and then you got into it a little bit, uh, Senator Wellman with the EPNO levy. And options for that, so I'll turn it over to our.
Yeah, yeah, perfect segue, um, so going to regionalization, one, I want to thank both of you for um, you know, listening to our concerns when. Last year, uh, during a a long session, when there was some discussion of adjusting the regionalization rate. Um, as Fred said, it's important from our perspective that. We provide ample, sustainable um funding for public education. And uh, one of the key uh components of that is recognizing and maintaining regionalization factors. They align with significantly different cost of labor and a diverse state with very different counties. Um, we live, we're fortunate to live in a community that supports education. Um, but it needs to reflect economic reality and common sense, contrary to popular belief. Mercer Island uh is not just a blank check, in twenty twelve, uh, we had a bond failure because it was not um. Is articulated, I think succinctly as it should have, it was a lot of lying, voters voted it down. Uh, we were then fortunate to have a bond that passed in twenty fourteen, but it's far from a given. Uh, that the community um will pay whatever's asked. Uh, without sort of diving into the details and saying does it align with with common sense? And our view is that the current regionalization factor of one point one eight, um, still does not adequately. Um, make up for the difference between the true cost of living differential if one looks at the, you know, labor bureau bureau statistics. Um, or any other metric, um, and you know, I think, you're probably well versed in uh. The personnel table and thirty four uh for OSPI, uh, but uh in order to have living wages and be able. Pay back to teachers, it's important, um, from our perspective that regionalization be preserved and then also. Maintain support for our funding education at the state level. Um, and and you know, doing so um gladly and willingly, uh, thirty eight percent. Of taxes on Mercer Island goes towards supporting uh the state public education funds and it varies from county to county. Uh, municipality to municipality, I believe that is certainly one of the highest, if not the highest, uh, in the state. Uh, and in exchange, we just want common sense to prevail when it comes to funding. Uh, a couple of other things to just sort of recognize and hopefully this won't be, uh, since it's a short session up for, uh, you know, it'll be preserved.
I'm sorry, Dan, I didn't mean to interrupt, I didn't do it, but I want you to ask, did it again, about thirty eight percent?
So thirty eight percent of all local property taxes goes towards the state general fund. I'm not aware of the particulars in the formula of how that applies from county to county, but I've looked in other counties and that changes, it's not. Not in just total dollar amounts, but the percentage is not across the board thirty eight percent, uh, for instance. Um, and then another sort of important data point, um, and this is like from OSPI. Um, Mercer Island only receives eighty eight percent of the median per student spend of the state average. Um, so despite having extreme extraordinarily high cost of living uh in the state, we actually make do with less funding. Per student than the state average and that makes, you know, the the job for Fred very, very difficult. Uh, and for the board uh as well, uh. It's just, yeah, so I mean, like, uh, and then I think, you know, one of the things that Deborah and I and others in the board have discussed, we're segueing. Into the EPNO levies, um, and and one of the things Senator Wellman like he touched on. Was, you know, how to, you know, make adjustments to that, adjustments to that to reflect the economic reality. And we think one of the common sense things would be for regionalization to apply to the EPNO.
And you also just said with BP.
Oh, so enrichment programs and operations, um, so that would be eighteen percent. Um, and that, you know, currently is twenty five hundred with the exception of one district, um, adjusted to inflation. We think a a reasonable fix that sort of correlates with health funding in other areas such as increases to parapay. Uh, is done is to index that to regionalization and then also to allow for the EPNO for the amount that we that we raised. Uh, to be tied to headcount, uh, rather than FTE. Um, because those are not, and Fred, maybe you want to quickly um discuss or or Deborah because.
I I actually got numbers on that, I asked, um, I looked into that issue and I've been meaning to send that to you, so I have the estimates of what that would have cost. Say, say why if we went to.
Cause we have our numbers, right?
Yeah, our, our, Matt and I have been talking about that, you know, when you look at if we apply the headcount versus um. Uh, versus. Probably about two hundred and fifteen thousand a year. Um, is what it would be charged to local tax base, cuz it's all on the levy side, so it would be a slight increase there, so we'd have a. Uh, somewhat of a gain there, the bigger one though is on the the EPNO as um Director Glos was just saying. With, if the EPNO levy could have a regionalization factor, it hasn't seemed like there's been much of an appetite. Down in Olympia, despite I know that both of you working hard to do it, which was, you know, how do we look at, you know, that, that. Starting place for us right now is we get about thirty one hundred dollars per student, um, for our, off of our EPNO levy. Seattle got that, they were granted, they got the higher amount, so they're up to thirty seven eighty.
Yeah.
And it doesn't seem like there's been a lot of appetite to change that, but is there a way to like to place a regionalization? To our local levy, I don't know, Deborah, you could fit on that too.
No, I, I mean, so, so just to, I mean, I appreciate you looking into that, it's been a busy.
Hold it up, yeah.
Okay, um, you know, but just basically for everyone's benefit, um, you know, we're we're funded based on FTE full time equivalent. Or for a student rather than headcount, well, our students are actually people, you guys know this, I'm preaching with fire. They're actually people and especially with levy dollars, so much of it goes to programs and to our specific children. If us, and we lose about a hundred um. Students FTE versus headcount, especially at the high school level, because they have the opportunity to do running start. Um, do programs at other places, we lose those dollars, we also have a seven period day. Um, so if a student drops, takes fewer than, um. If a student takes fewer than six classes, so five or fewer, we lose that funding based on FTE. But we don't get anything more for students that take seven period day, well, we fund our seven period day out of our levy dollars, so. We we lose, lose rather than, you know, even even if it was neutral, it would be more beneficial to us. You know, and regionalization, just as politics becomes so, has become so polarizing, you're, you know, we see it. East versus west in our state, winners versus losers, um, and regionalization has become one of those. Words, right, that that's like, oh, well, those that have, anyways, if we can um. Focus it on an actual cost, whether it like median housing cost for the district or even the county of the district. Um, that's at least our highest expense in King County, because housing costs are so astronomically high. I I think it's a lot harder to argue, well, these districts shouldn't shouldn't get as much when our housing costs are sixty percent of our income. Whereas there's other areas in the state, um, and that's when it's eighty percent of our budget. And then there's other areas of the state where it's thirty percent of their income, uh, for eighty percent of their budget. They're not losing staff based on their incomes, in fact, they, a lot of those districts are able to retain staff, there aren't as many districts to move around to. Or other industries to go into, um, so that argument hasn't really held water. But uh, but if we could change it to something like cost of labor or or housing costs, where it's really. Um, wait a second, it's not this, it's not this political word, the regionalization hasn't come and and kind of is, cuz who knows, like, I know it's based on factors, but. People don't know what factors it's based on, but it's hard to argue with housing costs and we should be paying our teachers so that they can live in a region where they're teaching.
Yeah.
And our teachers can't do that with, and and especially our parents can't do that.
And to build off what Deborah said, housing costs in the original McCleary fix, I mean, that was the one metric. That cited in terms of, I think, for uh, the Department of Revenue or Government Agency to deliver a report on. When any discussions for changes to regionalization comes up, so. And and I think that's because that's common sense, right, is 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 that that is the single largest expense and that's what, you know, may prohibit. Uh, you know, people from going into public education that might, you know, particularly in an area such as King County where there's other options. And looking at the cost of living and understanding that it's very, can be very limiting. Um, and then also like the types of individuals that you can attract to teach in the district.
I think that my sense is in terms of what's going to happen, um, is that there's going to be a small thing that we're going to be looking at. Which I do believe could be useful and for our east side schools, looking at Seattle versus, you know, in in this particular thing. But it will be phased and phrased as, because this is a multi-year. Approach and there needs to be a whole lot of study, this is phase number one of an overhaul. Um, because there's going to be a lot on this back, um, that doesn't work for us, we have, that's not gonna help us. I mean, you know, I can even hear the discussions around the state, so we're trying for something that is fairly small, but will be significant. And make a difference to our communities here, but no, we're we're messaging that it is something that we have. This is not the end of looking at it, um, this is just a very small phase one, hoping to get it through in a supplemental budget, so.
Yeah, thank you for that, we will, you know, we will keep abreast of that, um, moving on to something that.
So can I just comment on the the, um, so the, the FTE issue. Um, so, I know we have a benefit from Mercer Island for about two hundred thousand. So it would apply to about twenty one thousand students across the state, uh, it'd cost about six hundred million dollars a year. Um, if we make this change and we'll require legislation, so it's not appropriate bill for this year, cuz it's a short year and that's a lot of money. Um, but very interested in looking at that um next year and how.
When it's, but it comes from local dollars, so it's it's basically just giving the capacity.
It, uh, the way that we talked about it was being uh state dollars, so like when the state is giving the full.
You talk apportionment.
Yeah, so I think it's, I I think there's, they can be perhaps bisected or at least, you know, there's two separate, one would be EPNO authority. And then the other would be, you know, basic apportionment.
Yeah.
I approach more for that.
So that it would be revenue neutral for the state and then, yeah, so just little baby steps. And all those couple hundred thousand dollars that for us makes a huge difference.
And I think looking at, you know, what are the costs of having a student in the system, even if half their time is spent on another campus or homeschooling or whatever. Like, you know, you have to, you know, keep records about them, they have, they have access to, you know, the counselors, they have access to the school nurse. You have to keep a medical file on them, maybe, you know, like what, thinking about kind of those expenses, because we have those expenses for every kid, so it doesn't seem unreasonable at all. To be able to collect, you know, the levy based on, we have this kid and so we.
Yeah, I think it's a no brainer, in terms of, cuz I, like I said, I think it's revenue neutral unless there's something. Revenue neutral.
A bonus.
And then it also could be a way for those of us that support it, um, to get kind of started with. Let's look at the whole child rather than funding percentages of children, so, you know, gets us on that way, state apportionment would be awesome. Um, but, you know, this is, this is, this is a huge step in the direction. Um, and then also, um, when uh. Re- Representative Sen and I talked a while back about different strategies and and I've been speaking to board directors around the state. In terms of um coming up with partnerships for advocacy and it seems like, um, and I threw this out there at our Wausau conference in November. And there seemed to be a lot of interest and then we hit the holidays, but we'll pick it back up again, um, of uh. Trying to to have partnerships where there's districts like ours where, where, um, where. The uh salaries are such the big blow and then there's districts that construction, school construction is just a tremendous struggle. And if we can come in with a bill, I know we can't address more than one issue, but somehow it. And if we can come in with a bill, I know we can't address more than one issue, but somehow it somehow address more than one issue. Where whether it's the construction bills, the construction assistance or the salary assistance for staff. Like whatever your district might need, that it be very um district focused based on our specific budget challenges. So here it's. It's salaries and in a small district on the east side, it's probably building construction, being able to get. Nopping up all the past bonds and needing to do significant improvements. But looking at something where we can stop looking at us versus them and really look at how can we best help you in your time of, in in what your biggest challenge is.
And and I think what we're trying to do this session.
Yes.
Is kind of along those lines of this will work here. And and then we're, we are also working, um, there will be a number of bills uh that will really benefit the construction costs. Um, and and certainly that will help a lot if we get to keep the capital gains tax.
Right, there.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a lot to talk about too.
I just wanted to say thank you so much um to uh Representative Sen for the bill about I E P development over the summer, because. Yes, it'll help the younger kids coming in to not have a big delay in services. But I think for, it's very common for kids to have new needs or needs for the first time identified towards the end of the school year. For a teacher, you know, in May, like or in April to be like, hmm, there's something a little bit, you know, this kid needs some extra help kind of thing, like. Or the family maybe like, we're just now aware this kid has this diagnosis. And so not having that big, like basically six-month delay of of, you know, like having to then go home for the summer and then kind of get everything scheduled starting in the fall. I think that's going to help a lot of families and also for kids that are transferring districts, you know, within the state. I think that would be really helpful with that. Thank you.
So um, moving on to uh revenue neutral, uh perhaps like fixes that would um build on some of the accomplishments of earlier, uh bills that have passed. Uh, one is uh in thinking in sort of context, in just COP twenty-eight summit. Uh, reached recently concluded in Dubai. Also, uh, this year's global temperatures uh set the record for the the highest in human history. Um, according to the European Union's uh Climate Change Service. The year's global temperatures were one point four degrees Celsius warmer than pre-industrial levels. Um, and sort of what we can do to address uh those urgent concerns in a practical way. And one of the things is sort of building on, I think, well, a bill that I think I know enjoyed a terrific by the hundred and forty. It was House Bill sixteen forty-four, which allowed us to use transportation funds to purchase electric vehicles. Uh, do an analysis as well as charging stations. I think there was only a few dissenting voices on that. Um, I think a logical extension would be to allow districts to do an analysis for the carbon footprint of transportation. And to purchase carbon offsets in order to be carbon zero or neutral. Uh, with respect uh to the emissions from transporting kids to and from school. Um, I, I think in in order to do it in a way that was carbon neutral, it could just be left up to districts. Uh, if they want to take funds from the transportation fund uh in order to to pay for that, to offset emissions. Uh, there's materials in today's um. Uh, agenda, um, but one, I thought that was particularly um sort of um. I- important and I think succinct on the matter is from Lawrence Livermore Laboratories about getting to a carbon neutral. Uh, future and sort of the synopsis essentially is we need to use all means available. Um, not just technological fixes, but in many cases that includes cropland, soil management, forest-based, so. So cover crops, planting trees, um, also something in our state, uh, it lends itself to that. Uh, that is sort of a win-win for both uh districts and places like ours to be able to do something similar to Climate Pledge Arena. Uh, which became the first arena in the world to be certified as carbon neutral. And to do that on a district basis, leave it up to local school districts. Um, if they want to uh under, you know, to take an examination of what the carbon footprint is and the cost to offset and the most efficient way to do that. Uh, but to give us the authority uh to use transportation funds uh to do that and to try to address this. Um, climate change uh into our part uh for that. Uh, so, yeah, I mean. It, I, I again, I think a logical extension of sixteen forty-four, um, revenue neutral. Um, you know, the relevant R C W uh would be pretty easy to amend. That would give us the authority to do that. Do you?
Um, there's only a few, there's only a few school districts who have a transportation levy, very few, maybe five. Um, around the state, so it was interesting, you know, I was thrilled that we had enough support for sixteen forty-four, which initiated um from this school board. Uh, but I was surprised to learn that that's not a common thing to have a separate transportation levy. And so, um, I don't think it would have as much of an impact as, you you know, my whole, I think certainly, um. Doing the school bus, uh, zero emission school buses is going to have an enormous impact. And I don't think there's anything that wouldn't allow us to change sixteen forty-four for you guys again, but I would imagine. Um, there may be some other ways that we can you work on that.
I mean, I think that a district like Mercer Island, one of the things that it can bring to the table is to be a vegan. And to sort of try more uh innovative and new approaches, particularly being a small district. Um, the cost for offsetting a ton of carbon is about forty dollars and that's what it's like, um. Uh, per ton uh in the U S where it's measured. Uh, a school bus on average emits about sixteen tons, I believe, a year. So it's not astronomical figures for those districts uh that may elect uh to to use money that the, you know. Voters have approved for transportation.
So, and and the numbers that I saw, and I, at least maybe old numbers, and I don't know if it's true anymore. But I was looking at Mercer Island down two to four hundred thousand a year based on your transportation. What you get for it using the stars, the old stars formula and um what you spend. I saw that they, that that you have never received the full amount of money based on using the stars formula, but this.
It's pretty close. We're we're close to clutch each year.
You are.
Correct, on just general transportation, the issue comes into play when it comes.
With the special populations, so and and if we, so we'll be hopefully.
And that would make a huge, that would make a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Our Ruby and I were just talking about that this weekend, our meeting around just the difference, you know, with the um kind of the safety net.
Yeah.
And the way that things are working there and that. Um, you know, there's kind of two safety nets now, as you were kind of talking about it, and trying to make sure that. We are accounting for as many dollars as we can, because it is on that side of the house that we tend to. Lose the money.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to welcome in Representative Pi? I think she joins now.
Oh, yes, thank you. I did this.
She's joining us.
She's joining us.
Just took picture.
It seems serious.
She's here.
Listen.
Yeah.
Yes, I've been here since the beginning. Uh, lovely to listen to to all the conversation. Thank you very much for the recognition.
Do you have anything to report?
I think I want to respect the time. Um, the meeting is supposed to end at six. Happy to send um any uh work that I'm working on and solicit your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so moving on to try to keep as close as possible to that, I realize we're already at six oh one. Um, so for long-term capital gains, uh, I think, you know, it's concluded that it raised eight hundred and eighty-nine point three million dollars this year. Um, there was three thousand seven hundred and sixty-five returns, probably disproportionately uh from districts, you know. Such as Mercer Island and surrounding uh districts. But the big question, of course, is that five hundred million has been allocated to the Education Legacy Trust account. Three hundred and, I guess at least three hundred eighty-nine million for capital improvements. Um, from our perspective, we'd just like to be, any updates on how that money will be spent? I saw an article from the Olympian that quoted Senator Robinson saying, all the school district knows that there's a lot of money. Everyone has lots of ideas.
Yeah.
Um, and so just.
I'll I'll put it on that for sure. So, um, the reason we dedicated five hundred million. Um, at the outset goes into the Education Legacy Fund is because people were concerned that. There's a, you know, kind of, you can't trust that every year is going to be the same amount of income that comes in from the capital gains. And so there was an agreement, uh, common understanding that we would probably consistently get five hundred million. So five hundred million goes into the education, it's a education legacy account. And then anything above that would go into uh school construction funds. And um what we saw here, uh, as you reported, we brought in a lot more money than we expected. And so that construction fund is uh money is is growing and is is there. Um, so there's, I know at least one proposal to make sure that some of that construction money also benefits the um Early Learning Facilities Fund. Because the capital gains tax uh is meant for education and early learning. So, um, so making sure that on the capital side, a small proportion of it, but again, in a percentage way, so depending on the growth. It will, you know, still um grow with the percentage, but a little bit of that go to the Early Learning Facilities Fund and the capital side. Um, but I would say between. Between this conversation and the conversation about electric school buses or carbon neutral or offsets. The biggest bang for the buck will be making sure that voters do not overturn the Climate Commitment Act. Or the capital gains tax in the November election. Cause those are the, um, you know, and I'm talking to policy right now, right? If we eliminate the capital gains tax, then not only that money that is, you know, that we're hoping for down the line. But, you know, ones that we've already budgeted for the next few years, cause we do a four-year budget, that money would be gone. So, you know, and all the Climate Commitment Act that is investing in all of the environmental benefits that we're doing in our state would be gone overnight. And with a, you know, not like fin- with a finesse, but just gone, right? Uh, with a blunt instrument. So honestly, the biggest impact of any of those dollars is to maintain those dollars coming in. Um, beyond the initiative. Again, we've anticipated that that money, that that five hundred million is there, and so that. It's already cooked in and baked in into our budget over the next four years. We didn't. You know, we didn't, we're not waiting to see if five hundred million came in. We knew that that's going to come in, so that's already in the budget. So there isn't extra money floating anywhere. Um, the, again, the overage is going towards the capital, school capital dollar, so that, you know, there might be more flexibility there. But again, most of the time that's just spoken for based on uh the school districts passing their levy, so.
Well, thank you for that, for that overview of mine. Um, two, two last items on the agenda, they both relate uh to just items that we wanted to draw attention to. From O F P I supplemental operating budget priorities, and they sort of link to some of the topics we hit on uh tonight. And one is uh advancing a living wage for Washington's paraeducators.
Yeah.
Uh, it's fairly significant in terms of dollar amounts. It's, I think, five hundred and eleven million dollars for the twenty-five, twenty-seven bilingual. It would uh increase by seven dollars per hour, uh, the parapay. Uh, I think it also recognized something we we hit on with regionalization, uh, what it means to pay a living wage. Uh, and then it also recognizes uh regionalization differences. Uh, and then that seven dollars isn't, it's been regionalized based upon the current regionalization rates. Uh, so it's definitely something uh that the district supports. Uh, and and hopefully, uh, you know, that will move forward. Um, I think that just a couple points on that when we were, you know, and Fred and I have talked about it. Uh, Endeavor as well is, is one is to be allocated to all paras under the C B A. Um, rather than just under the prototypical model, uh, certain districts um have more than than just the prototypical. Uh, so I think that would be something to consider, uh, to just respond to.
Changing the prototypical.
Not changing the prototypical, but recognize.
The bill does.
Okay, but but then also recognize, like, paying the additional seven dollars, you know, to to the actual.
The levy bought.
We can put, well, there's two parts of it.
Right, when you're saying one to the.
One to the parent and then they pay.
Yeah, and you're saying pay for the levy, fund it.
Yeah, we're just affirming that if, if we give s- uh, seven-dollar raise to. Paraeducators who are funded with the state allocation. Then we'll have to come up with the seven dollars out of our levies, which are already impacted. And so the request is. Can, if we're going to talk about a seven-dollar raise for paras, can that be as all's paras as we define it under our C B A?
Right, and and what I'm saying is, is if the prototypical model. Changes so that there are more paras paid for through the par- prototypical model, might they not cover? Those that are paying, being paid by the levy?
It could, it just depends on how many, on what they dealt, or what the changes, which we can talk about, yes.
Yeah, so it could help a lot or a little, or not at all.
Correct.
Okay.
We're hoping for the.
Yes.
Um, the other one is for special educate, education and funding, uh, fully the special education safety net. Uh, which would be forty-four million uh for the uh next fiscal year for twenty twenty-four. And just recognizing that the costs vary uh for every district, uh, based on sort of the unique characteristics. Um, and that certain districts like Mercer Island have quite significant out-of-district costs. Um, so it would, you, I think, go towards, uh, you know, help alleviating some of those kind of like constraints that would be there here.
So, and you want to talk about anything specific with special education, um, in terms of bills or even things that. Either Representative Sen or Senator Womack have brought up tonight?
Um. You know, safety net is, I don't want to say the bane of my existence, but it 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 requires a lot of additional work with districts to, cause we. We get dinged if we're not compliant on certain things, so you have to go through the I E P and kind of grade it to make sure all your ducks in a row. And if you miss something in the past, it's been a fifteen percent ding for one mistake, thirty percent ding for two mistakes, forty-five percent ding. And so this.
Was this under Glenna? We, were you?
Yes, this was under Glenna, but this is still under Tanya.
Okay.
And this year, this coming school year, they've changed it to five, ten, fifteen, twenty versus fifteen, thirty, forty-five, nothing. So that now is getting better, but all your I E Ps still have to be submitted, they have to be graded by a committee. And and so we're talking about not only the time it takes for districts to get these ready, but that manpower it takes at the state level. Um, to review all of these for compliance, subtract out the the money that, you know, for the errors. And then, um. And then they review and and pay, so there's a whole process.
Is that, is that just for the safety net that you're talking about? But why would you be looking at the safety net if the, if we're at fifteen percent now? You're you're at eleven percent.
We're eleven percent, but we still, you know, Mercer Island expects to submit thirty-five I E Ps for a cost of two million dollars in reimbursement this year.
The percentage is the amount that you lose if you make a mistake on your.
Oh, yeah, I don't do that, yeah.
Yeah, so even though we're reimbursed eleven percent, we still have a significant number of students. And and this is the trend around the state that require one-on-ones, require behavior text, require. Two-on-ones to keep them out of residential placement, sometimes three-on-ones. And, you know, um, that requires an intensive amount of money and manpower. And the state reimburses that, and a district as small as Mercer Island to have thirty-five. You think about what a Seattle's going to submit, or a Clover Park is going to submit up to two hun- you know, around two hundred. And they, they're still getting fifteen percent, you know, um. You're still getting that money in, but you still have kids that are just too costly.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and the more that we try to keep them here and not place them somewhere else, the more expensive that becomes, cause we need more manpower to provide those services. Because there isn't a bed somewhere, uh, or a local M P A that specializes in what that particular kid needs.
Yeah, so those thirty-five going to uh not in school, or is that?
No, um.
Going for residential services?
So, no, so for instance, statewide, there's only sixty students placed out of state residential.
Yeah.
And there's about six hundred that are in N P As around the state, so like an A P L or Gersh Academy, that kind of thing. Um, so for us, our insights is too small for me to tell you how many are out of state and so forth.
Yes.
Um. But most of our students that are here. Are getting, that it was meant for have one-on-ones or have behavior texts or have a two-on-one, right? That they've become costly. Um, and so, again, we provide those services to students without, I don't say without thinking about the cost, I always think about the cost. But we still make sure we do it right for kids.
Okay, so now thirty-five of those are in residential treatment in or out of state, okay, no.
I think, you know.
Majority of them have one-on-ones or require significant mental health services, behavior tech, counseling.
I think big picture, you know, as you're contemplating. The restraint and isolation or the implications of the, you know, summertime I E.
the restraint and isolation or the implications of the, you know, summertime IEPs and whatnot. You know, time is very limited for all of us, but whatever you need from us in terms of Sue Ann's expertise, Anna Bolivar, our assistant director or whatnot, we will be more than happy to help and help shape, you know, what are the nuances of it? And, you know, as we're thinking about restraint and isolation, you know, what have been the impacts of the current laws around it, and then what are the tweaks? So we're happy to help wherever we can.
Yeah, I'll say one other thing, which kind of is tangential to this, that has really been a major concern for me. And especially since what I saw in Finland, is that we have a bill that is going to shore up our prep schools in terms of what happens, what is needed in the classroom. Many of our teachers, and I don't know how how many of your teachers, have not had any special education training for their degree, and yet they have kids in inclusionary classrooms where they may have several kids with IEPs. And and we've heard from teachers that they feel very uncomfortable being asked to do something that they really haven't been prepared to do. And so, you know, really making sure that that our prep colleges are more aligned with all the changes that we've made about what happens in the classroom, just in terms of using technology, you know, and feeling comfortable with it themselves.
Director Lee or Martinez, other things you want to add, sorry. I want to be respectful of people's time, I know we've gone a few minutes over.
I appreciate, I appreciate every time. I would love to hear from Eva and Asia, if you guys have anything that you wanted to add, if that's all right to ask.
Yeah, just going back and talking about the regionalization again, the cost of living for teachers. Last year, I had the opportunity to survey all of our high school staff on their commutes and how long it takes them to get to work each day and where they live. And I thought it was really interesting, and it was more of a light-hearted piece, but like going back and looking at our data, most of them travel like thirty, forty minutes, and if they do live closer, it's on the lives of the spouse who happens to live on their side. And so I think that as we think of cost of living, and we are lucky to have a lot of older teachers who are on the higher end of the pay scale at our high school. But it's hard to want to, like, a young teacher probably doesn't want to travel that far in the morning to get to school each day. So just thinking about how to retain and also attract new staff, it's really difficult. Especially for us, it's like, we can't relate to our teachers because they live really far away, and they can't relate to us because they don't know what it's like to live near us.
Yeah, and some, like, teachers being more part of arguing and stuff like that.
And Aisha and then our our prior board representative, Andrew, they wrote a letter. It's on the meeting agenda materials that that discusses this and sort of like talks about the experience and, you know, of what it means to live in a high cost of living district, and the impact on teachers and staff from a student's perspective.
I love that you surveyed the teachers and that you got that, that data, I would agree, both experience and then wealth of data. Absolutely, I I I'm I'm sure you all are thinking about, as the remaining teachers who live on Mercer Island age out of service, that would be a huge gap, absolutely. Hopefully, we'll have more happen.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for making time and for meeting with us again. I look forward to it next year. And have a good evening, and then for the remaining board members, stick around because then we have a short executive session. And if you really go into that, I would have to, you'd love to continue with your evening plans. I hear you, Bezos, for five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you start.
Yeah, thank you.
You for.
And then you can take this off for a second because we're going to go into executive session.
I agree.
Okay, there you go.
Alright, we're back at six twenty nine. Um, we're here to conduct an executive session following our meeting, our legislative meeting session to discuss litigation pursuant to RCW forty two thirty one N one I. Um, the board will be in executive session until seven PM. Um, do I have a motion to move uh to recess into executive session at six thirty?
Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh with that, uh with the unanimous vote to move into executive session, uh we will do that. Great.
Okay, we're back in regular session at seven o'clock right on time. Do I have a moment to adjourn the regular meeting at 7:00 P. M.? A second? Thank you, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. And we're adjourned at 7:00 P. M. Thank you. Great.
Good job. All right, maybe I can second. Yes. Oh. Yeah. And it's dry to the point of coughing.
It's a long time.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.